Better than a clock. I don't need to watch. Just watch John.
Seven o'clock.
Seven o'clock. Let's call the meeting order, please. Stand for Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands. One nation, and every God, indivisible, omnipotent, infinite, and just as far. Good evening. Evening, everyone. Item 1A, comments with visitors regarding agenda items. Glad to see you back tonight. Item 2, Chairperson's Report. I don't have anything formal yet from the Republican Town Committee on the Vacancy. And, uh, Ms. Mary and I were at the Board of Finance meeting the other night, and presented the five-year plan. It seemed to go pretty smoothly at that time. And we did give them information about starting to take a look at future needs of space for the schools. Okay, that's the end of my report. Item 3, Superintendent's Report. And I'm sorry, John just came in. John, it was missed from the agenda for additions to the agenda. I asked the board members if anyone had any. We're gonna put it on there. If you don't have any, we'll move on. If you do, we'll consider. Okay, then. With that being said, I moved item 3, Superintendent's Report.
Did we want committee reports, or are we gonna skip? Does anybody have any things?
It's not a...
I know it's not...
You missed the pledge?
That's what I meant.
Yeah, no. Unless you want to add it to the agenda, it's not on the agenda.
That's why I was asking, does anybody have any committee reports that we should add to the agenda? It's the only thing I could think of.
Curriculum meeting, but...
I think I would hold off on something like that we would want on the agenda, just because if it's... If we're having discussion, probably don't wanna just add it if there's... Thank you.
Okay. Let's see.
Uh, good evening, everyone. Happy Fall. Is today the first day?
No.
Is this the first day?
Yes, it is.
It's the weekend.
Great. Um, we're gonna start with an audit update. It is that time of year for both the school side and the town side that participates in our annual audit. And I will ask our business manager, Mrs. Heine, to give an update on the audit.
So, good evening, everybody. The audit is going well. The auditor will be here again this week. They're here last week. And they're gonna finish up their work in the office. We hope to have final numbers by mid-October. They did mention that, though, we should be putting in up to 2% into our non-lapsing now that the legislation has changed. As we discussed this in prior meetings, we don't need Board of Finance approval, and we can now use this for any educational purposes. Prior to this, we could only use it for maintenance or capital, and we had to get Board of Finance approval. Um, it is the board's decision, and it's just something to consider now that the legislation has changed.
So when we have that final, when the audit's completed, and we know what the surplus is, we'll then have a discussion on how we wanna deal with it, what we'd like to do with it.
Thank you, Mary. Personnel update. We did have a recent hire. Um, her name is Angel Shorins. And she will be filling the position of one of our secondary special education positions. It is a combination of our reading, uh, reading programs, which, uh, this person has a very specialized training in reading, as well as life skills for both our middle school and high school students. And will be working with our middle school students with their transition planning into high school. So we welcome Angel to the East Grandby School District. Welcome, Angel. Middle school, high school scheduling. Um, middle school, high school started a scheduling committee last year, and it is back up. We're looking at the, um, interestingly enough, I saw a couple other districts are doing the same thing. Looking at the best way to utilize all of our resources, um, personnel, financial. We're looking at, um, how to best support our students with instructional minutes throughout the course of the day. Um, you know, uh, yeah, with a strong lens still to keeping a middle school model in place. Um, but looking at our certification areas and, uh, looking more creatively. Over the years, we have increased courses. We have increased our science classes. A lot of our science classes come with an additional lab. Uh, we are landlocked, for lack of a better word, with some of our courses, because some of our staff members are teaching in three buildings. So we get really kind of caught on what, what periods of the day, uh, we can teach certain, uh, classes for our students. So we are, um, the middle school, high school administration, um, has a committee to kind of revisit and review our entire, uh, 612 scheduling with, um, you know, different stakeholders abroad. So we would love to have a Board of Ed rep or two. If anybody would be interested in serving on that committee, you can, um, either let me know now, or think about it and send me an email, and I'll be happy to forward your names, um, to the admin.
Sorry, what's the commitment on that?
I don't know how often they meet, Mr. Welsh. The goal would be to have a recommendation on, you know, to the Board of Education. I don't know if there's a bye date.
Is that also discussing, like, the possibility of an eight-period day?
I think that's one of the conversations, absolutely.
I think it's a sit-in.
That's actually what some districts have gone to, to kind of help with these situations, have gone to an eight-period day. Um, some have gone to a block schedule, some have gone to a modified block. Um, you know, we do have the added parameters of our middle school and high school. It's not just one school. Um, and then Seymour gets pulled in with a little bit. Um, but yes, one of the, I think, one of the things they're looking at is an eight-period, uh, eight-period.
Yeah, that's what we were talking about in curriculum. So I would certainly be interested in that.
I'd be interested as well. I started picking at Tim's brain, um, one evening at open house.
Okay.
Good conversation.
Great.
I think it'd be, I'd be interested.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay.
Um, that is it.
Don't need to cut you off?
No, I'm just writing names down. Thank you.
Item 4, Recommended Actions. Can I get a motion to approve July 2024 and August 2024 financials? And then we'll have Mary present them?
I'll move it.
Okay, Mark's got the motion. John with the second.
Sure.
Okay, any questions yet or discussion? None. Mary, it's all yours.
Well, you receive that in the board package. Not much happens in July and August, as you can see. We are still in the process of putting in our annual encumbrances. We have some of them in, but we don't have them all in yet. We hope to have all the annual encumbrances in by the end of September. So hoping our September financials, you can, you know, will go down the encumbrance line, and it should be a lot more. We'll have all the salaries in, and a lot of our contracts are still coming in. And we've been working with, um, some of the, um, other, let's see, I think, the, uh, the people of transportation, things like that, to get all those contracts in, so they'll have a better understanding of our annual encumbrances. Any questions, comments?
Just a question about, more question and a comment, too. I know we discussed, um, kind of a line-by-line budget sort of thing. Out of curiosity, I was planning on, that's, I did an email you asking about the program we're using and stuff. And I went on their website, started perusing around at different platforms. I got on the phone with one of their guys. He directed me to another guy who might have more technical background. There's a lot more sophisticated ERP softwares within their umbrella. Um, because I would certainly, I know it's relatively new to the district, so I wouldn't wanna anybody through...
Are you talking about Munis?
Yes.
Okay, Munis is not new.
Well, it's not new, but it's old. If you look at the whole envelope of Tyler Enterprises, what we're asking to do would take a lot of workarounds. Like you said, it's not really capable, but there are other platforms that it is capable. So he directed me to another guy to ask the same kind of questions. He kinda helped me direct me a little bit. But he gave me another person, um, 'cause the only way in the current platform, we could certainly use an export function and export everything, and then set up our own kind of pivot and map those. It'd be a one-time pain in the butt to map those codes within categories, and then we could share that. That's something to do, how we could do it now, as is. But they also have other solutions where it's actually integrated, and they have things where it's focused on transparency with actually web interfaces as well. So you can select which data for drop for categories and stuff. So I'm just kind of picking his brain. Um, it would be nice if we could do it automated and stay within that whole umbrella, so it's not really a, a new platform, so to say, for your department. Because I know it's a pain in the butt to do anything new, especially, um, just to get the hang of it. So if we can stay within the same kind of user interface and process flow, same thing everyone's used to, but kind of upgrade, might be worth something looking at in the future, so.
Ricky, are you talking within Munis?
Yeah.
Or within Tyler?
Well, Munis was, Munis is now called Tyler Enterprises, I think.
Well, Tyler's the parent.
The umbrella, and you have all different subcategories.
Yep.
You know, we use the human resource piece of it. We use the Munis.
And now, the first, as soon as you sign on to Tyler Enterprises, it now pops up a little, "Did you know that Munis is now called Tyler Enterprise?" So they're doing a name change. You're trying to force it. But yes, he understood what I was getting at, and, I mean, they have a wide variety of...
They absolutely do, and I've asked for a few things to do. The FS report, it all comes down to budget. Do they have anything to do with it?
Correct.
They can do anything we want.
Correct, but I think with...
Absolutely.
With the public's involvement and what they're requesting, and I think everybody would like it easier. I think it's worth looking at what the expense would be. And, correct me, so Munis is now currently shared with the town as well for their accounting?
No, it is not.
No?
It is not. No, they use something completely different, and we don't.
Is that something...
I don't know the system they use. That was brand-new to them last year. That's all I know. And I don't know.
Munis is too big for the town, is my understanding.
Too big for the town, but...
We did have that conversation. We just upgraded our Munis a couple of years ago. And we are actually still working on the upgrade and all the trainings. And we did, you know, we did have conversations with the town at the time. But the, I know, what's we're gonna look for, too, the town wouldn't need a system like Munis.
It's too robust for them.
So, yes.
Is that what you're saying?
Yes.
For their needs, it's too robust.
I can't imagine, I can't imagine, though, the public, if they wanna see line-by-line for us, they'd wanna see it for the town, too. Yeah. So when I was on the guy, on the support line, just talking to him, just an example would be, so we have three buildings. High school, middle school, or four buildings. If you consider middle school and high school, I consider it one building, but two entities. But the whole parent-child relationship, they have that, but there's no, you can't make a child another node and branch out from that. It's, it's one level, that's it. Um, there is software they have that you can do that, though. And so I gave the example of, if I wanted to say, "How much electricity did I pay for in Seymour?" And just, we have that, but not in this.
We do have that in this.
But to drill down, like, okay, so I need more layers for a good example. So, so in high school art, or, or, high school art, ninth grade supplies.
I can tell you that, yes.
You can, but like, it's not, you can drill down in reports in Excel. You can export.
Yes.
But to have a, for, to be able to quickly supply it for, how quickly can you do that? Because it sounded, the way he made it sound like, yeah, you can do that, but it's a lot of manual exporting and kind of mapping yourself. Whereas some of their other software, it looks like...
Well, let me just interject for a second. Uh, we have spoken about a different budget process this year. So we are actually gonna be starting that process in a couple weeks. We have heard the feedback. We are looking at a different way of presenting the budget. I mean, we do have line-by-line here. We're gonna look at, starting with a, um, a building base by object code. And then we can go from there. If there's any future of actually, we can't change our operating system right now.
No, no, this is a down...
Absolutely, absolutely. So if what we're going to do this year, still, the board doesn't feel it's satisfactorily, satisfactory, then we can certainly, you know, look for additional modules or different systems within, um, you know, within Munis. But I think you'll see that the budget presentation this year, um, will be very different than what we've done in the past. We've had the capabilities in the past. We, we did what, the way we presented. So it wasn't until the feedback came at the end of last year, where, you know, Mary and I talked, um, from the, in the board, gave us the feedback for more kind of itemized, and that's what you'll see as we move forward.
I'm, I'm trying to, I'm honestly trying to save you guys' work, because I know your department is small for, uh, for what we have. And I know the capability is there, but it sounds like it's gonna take some manual work and manipulation. Whereas I'm thinking for a canned solution, because that technology exists, and they have it. So just down the road, we should maybe get some pricing on packages that do it for you. That way they can focus on day-to-day stuff instead of doing manual, but they don't have to.
Sure.
Anyone else?
How long have we been with Munis?
Uh, we've been with Munis, I wanna say, decades.
Right, and how will, you know, what's our current contractual obligations of that?
That I don't know. I'm, I'm not sure. I'd have to go back and look.
And Ricky, do you think that everybody would be satisfied if we looked at a line, item, budget, projecting five cost centers? The, uh, Algro, Seymour, middle school to high school, and then, and then the administrative office?
These types of ERPs are set up so you can drive it, if you wanna do it by voting, you can. If you wanna do it by category, you can.
You have the way, you can actually select each one, how you wanna draw it.
I'll try and go right down the brass tacks here.
Yep.
I think that's what people wanna see. They wanna see what is the, you know, pick a line item. They wanna see what is the cost that, you know, is attributed to, boom, Seymour.
And when you, when you go to a more sophisticated program like that, it starts, it's like any system, it's crap in, crap out.
And if I interpret Mary's remarks, that, yeah, we have that, we just don't report it that way.
We, we, as Missy said, we, we looked at it after the comments we got last year, and we will change it. You'll see something different in October, and then we can take it from there.
Okay.
But yes, we absolutely can get there with our current system.
And I see that as something that we shouldn't be, we're putting it out as a budget. But I don't see a reason to keep that through the school year. I don't think that, I don't think the public needs to go and get this type of detail each and every month, or, you know.
They have it each and every month that are...
Well, I don't think they need to have us go through the exercise of attributing particular costs. But I think they wanna know upfront, you know, what is the budget for, um, you know, fill in the blank.
Just so I understand, are you proposing looking at a software that would have live data, that people could go in and look on that?
There is the possibility, but more so that it's just, it's able to be sorted via the program rather than manual exportation and manipulation. I'm just trying to make lives easier.
That would be ideal, but, you know, but if, if we're, if we're working with this, you know, that's what we got. And, and we should try to find a way to take what, you know, what we're working with, and then adapt it to what we wanna show and what we wanna, you know, present. So that, and we're, we're doing what we all, I think we all agree, that we wanna, you know, just be, I hate to use the word transparent.
Yeah, I'm tired of the word transparent.
But we wanna, we wanna put out there so that, you know, individual parents and/or students can know.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah, I think it benefits us as well. You know, we get new board members. We have board members being experienced, but it's nice to look at it. You could look at a line item budget from the past five years as to what increases, where the increases went. If there's any areas we can make some cuts. I just think there's a, a lot of information there for all of us.
Well, and what Ricky's talking about gives you that flexibility.
Yeah.
To drill and, and mine it however you like, as opposed to putting the extra burden on the business office to have to, if somebody comes up with a, a way that they want to present the data, well, it's a manual exercise, instead of just a couple of clicks, boom, and it auto-gens the report for you very quickly.
Yeah, I agree. We, we don't need to put any more work on Mary.
Exactly.
And if Ricky, Ricky's got something that works, and it's, uh, you know, it could pay for itself. I mean, it could just pay for itself over time with our ability to look at the budget better.
I think it would be helpful, um, like I said, Tyler has a whole umbrella of things. And we can probably get some demos, just like some video demos of, it might make more sense to actually see it in action rather than talk about it. So, I'll see if I can get some videos of currently what, like, what you're familiar with versus what they can offer under the same umbrella. I mean, from there, then we can kind of get some quotes, see what, see what's in the budget for next year, maybe the year after. But, or, and find a good way to deal with what we have. Supply what people want with what we have now, which we can, it's just a little more work.
No, thank you. I mean, it's, it's worth it, the time you spend spending doing the data. I mean, one piece of data, you found that you presented a town meeting when people talked to our regionalization, and you pointed out very smartly that when you looked at the regional districts around Connecticut, they're all spending more money than we are, and all of them. So it's, it's not a bargain going that route, and I think that's something we've known in the past. But Ricky went and got that data, and it makes sense. Uh, people questioned, Stonington is very familiar with East Grandby. And, you know, why was our budget so much different? And Ricky pointed out again there, Stonington only has two buildings. We have three. And three buildings are gonna cost you a lot more money for a lot more reasons than having two. So having those kind of explanations, I mean, really muted any further discussion. It was accurate. And it was, I thank them for presenting it, because it gave me some information as well. Well, thanks, Rick. Anyone else? Any other comments or questions for Mary about the finances for July or August? Seeing none, I'll call the motion to a vote. All those in favor of the motion of accepting July 2024 and August 2024 financials, signify saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, motion carried unanimously. Thank you. Item 4B, approve using non-lapsing funds to treat fields at middle school, high school. And get a motion on the table to discuss.
I'll second.
Okay, motion by Amanda Correa, second by Ricky. Thoughts? Okay, uh, Missy, wanna make some comments about it?
Sure.
You would imagine there'd be some questions from some board members.
Sure. As you're aware, we do have the funding to add some irrigation to the fields that currently do not have irrigation. Our lower soccer field has had irrigation for a number of years. I'm not sure of the date it went in. However, we still need to maintain our fields. We still need to treat them. We need to, uh, take care of them for not only disease, but moles and, um, grubs and everything else. And in your pocket, there is a quote from True Grain that would, and then there's a, there's also a, a map with some outlines. So there is a quote for $30,185 that would treat our fields with all the organic materials that are permitted for schools. The, this would include our lower and our upper soccer field, our softball field, our baseball field, and also the middle school, um, that's a softball field or little league field. If the board is not looking, or we'd like to, um, take one of the fields off, sometimes we exempt the middle school field, sometimes we bring it in. It really is important that we maintain the fields. We've been going back and forth for years. We're, we've already invested a lot of money from the board through our non-lapsing funds and such, um, the town as well, to provide a better baseball field, softball field, I think, is that two years ago, or is that last year? That might have been two years ago now.
Two years.
Two years ago. But again, we, we need to maintain our fields. Our fields are the, are used constantly. Down the line, we're gonna need to talk about kind of rusting our fields a little bit, um, because they are in constant use. But regardless, uh, we have to look to treat our fields. So my recommendation, and I, I did talk with the Facility Subcommittee, is if we looked at, um, our non-lapsing funds for this year, this is an annual fee, that's, and then we would look to, uh, budget other costs for next year, or whatever the, the board chooses. Now, I will say, the town does pay some money already from a company to do some work on our fields. So I'm working with First Select Person. She sent me the, the bills of the other company. So we would look to see, um, if we do this, we can discontinue another company. So there might be a little bit of, uh, there should be a difference in the overall costs, because we're already paying something, if that makes any sense. Yeah, because we already pay an outside company to do some work. So, and Ray was, uh, Ray received these, uh, quotes, so I'm very appreciative of Ray Carlson going out. And, you know, he's, he's maintenance, not really fields, you know, or grounds, he's maintenance. But, um, he does pretty much anything that we have asked of him, so that we can move forward.
Board members' comments?
You know, just like to see a detailed, I see what was sent for the quote. But a kind of detailed plan, if it's an annual, like, in this month, we will blah, 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 this month, we will do. And it's gonna be an annual fee, and that covers that. There's gonna be years where we're drier. There's gonna be years where there's a higher outbreak of clover or something. So kind of then addendum for add-ons if we need this. That way it's not nickel and diming as, so we have something laid out and what we can budget for. So this, I wanna quote, kind of, this is an annual typical year, and this will keep all your, like, I see the diagram, too, so kind of label that, you know, field, like, labels a, maybe the baseball field is Field A. Kind of a scheduled, Field A will be treated this often, uh, aerated and overseeded this many times per year or season, kind of just a detailed quote. Because I'm sure there's gonna be other. I know Green Machine could also put in a quote. I did ask that during the irrigation stuff. I haven't seen that yet, so that way we can kind of just compare.
Yeah, and actually, thank you, Ricky. I, I neglected to say, this is a quote for kind of a baseline budgeting, but I would absolutely would go out and get additional, um, companies to quote the same scope of work, essentially.
Yeah, so we just have to make sure we're comparing apples to apples and what, what each quote includes and frequency.
My question's the same as yours, Ricky. I'm looking at this, and it just says round number?
I think they're supposed, I think it's a line item, kind of one, two, three, four, five different treatments. So each treatment is that amount, and then one treatment of aeration seeding. I don't know why that doesn't say 20 for the secondary.
But it gets to that whole, okay, so...
Yeah, that's kind of why, that was one of the reasons I asked for more detail.
So it looks like there's five treatments, and then there's aeration and seeding, but, you know, it's not specific. It just says high school, middle school.
When, frequency, all that stuff.
I mean, maybe that's what that is showing. And then, um, this is that time where you would, you would do fields that you're gonna go, that are gonna go into dormancy. You know, the baseball field, for instance. This is, this is time to, to be doing this. And then, yeah, and then going forward, same question you had, Ricky, is this, this is a $30,000 stopgap just to get us through, move us into the next fiscal year? And if so, then, you know, what are we really looking at in terms of going forward budget wise?
If this is, if this is an annual fee, then since we're coming up on budget season, I don't think the whole non-lapsing has to be the full, because that's for an annual. That would get us through a whole entire year. So we should ask them to break it out of what needs to be done in the fall before our next budget comes into, like, how? You know what I mean?
I do.
Like, what do we need to pay that wasn't budgeted for out of this annual to get us to the next budget season?
Yeah, those are good questions, because looking at here, I only see pesticide-free. It looks like it's being treated for insects. I don't see, maybe the town is covering fertilization. I don't see anything here on weed control, and I think in the spring, whether it's dandelions or the clover, is what we'd want covered. But everything I see, five lawn pesticides, applications, and two aeration and seeding. And certainly with us irrigating, makes it worthwhile to spend money on aerating and seeding later, because then we can, we can maintain it. But right now, yeah, I don't know if the town, maybe the town is paying for fertilization, but it looks like this quote. But Missy said she'll, she'll get a better quote and be more specific. I agree with her. You know, well, we have to do it. I mean, this has been a topic, it's been a hot potato in this community for decades and decades. Everyone wants to use the fields. We all see what they look like. And, uh, you know, I think we've done the best that we can do in the past. People did it by volunteers. People are busy today. And I think it's, uh, an opportunity for us. We're, we're making an investment. There's no sense in putting irrigation system in if all we're gonna do is irrigate dirt and weeds. So this does, uh, complete the project, but I think it's gotta be a little more detail. And you're right, getting it... you're right, getting it coordinated with what the town's going to do. But, you know what, their town fields are our fields. We all use them. And I think when we go to the Board of Finance and present it, you know, we certainly mention that these fields are used by everybody, and I think everyone in the community recognizes that. So, where do we stand with that then? Are we looking for more details? Do we want to?
I think that should be an action that should be captured in the minutes, but, but yeah, that's an action that I think should be carried over to for future meeting and have that included next time, if we can get the details for the next meeting.
Is time ticking though, Mark?
Yeah, it is.
Well, we want to lease fertilizer. I think the time's ticking, John. I think it's going to be too late to seed. By time the irrigate, we can't seed before it's irrigated. You know, we got to seed it, then irrigate it so it grows. And right now, we're getting in October. Those type of things you want to do in September. I'm not sure the irrigation system probably won't be in October, it'd still be good. But are we going to have the irrigation system up and running?
Do we, do we have an update on if they have a velvety for fall install?
Have we heard anything? I'm not sure if we're.
I don't have information on that yet.
So I'm not sure if we're really time-wise can do all that. I mean, it's useless throwing seed out there if we're not going to water it, unless it rains every three days. But certainly fertilizing to get it started, seeding it in the spring is not ideal. We have irrigation, the field gets used, but the soccer fields don't.
I'm sorry.
We're irrigating.
Just looking at Lisa, it's, you're a farmer. Can you or can you not get away with that? I know, I've done seeding in the fall and didn't have to water it a lick, because there's so much moisture that's put down.
It hasn't rained for three weeks. I wouldn't do it this year.
I put a lot of grass.
Other years I would try it, I wouldn't do it this year. It's really dry right now, and it has been, and it doesn't look like it's going to change soon. So I think it might be. Again, if we need to do something this year, then we need to do it yesterday. But if it's not going to get irrigated, it's just going to be bird food.
But I think if we have a plan, we get the irrigation in, get some fertilizer on it before winter, so that it comes back strong early spring, I think then we're up and running come spring.
So with that being said, then, the point that I was making about getting the detailed list should be prudent then. Getting the details that we were talking about getting, because we don't have the irrigation system in, so we're not going to be able to do most of this stuff anyway. So getting that for the next meeting, I think.
Now, they could treat for pesticides though this time of year. We don't need irrigation for that. They'll get washed in by a rain, because we do have insect issues, especially in soccer fields.
Yeah. I think one of the big things is rolling it too.
Yeah.
With the moles.
But that's not part of this quote.
Now, I think Missy's worked out a plan for that, but if we, if we're treating for insects, then there won't be food for moles next year.
I'm talking about the True Green quote. I'm focusing on that right now.
Then that's.
The details, the details, we want to get that. I think that was your question, right?
Yeah, I agree.
So the action is to approve using non-lapsing funds to treat the fields. It doesn't say we're accepting the True Green proposal?
Good point.
Yep.
So we, I mean, we could approve that, because, like Lynn said.
Were you comfortable saying that in an amount not to exceed $31,000?
Well, if that's for an annual plan, I can't imagine that's going to be a one-time seasonal treatment.
What they're telling us is.
But they can create an annual plan, Ricky, maybe beginning in November, next November.
So we want to use, I'm fine.
It's only non-lapsing this year, right? And then it's going to roll into the, it's going to roll into the regular budget?
We're going to, we're going to want to fund to June 30th.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We're going to want to fund to June 30th, and we're going to want to do all of these things presumably.
Yeah, I would think that.
If possible. It just gets difficult, because once you move to baseball season and soccer fields, I mean, that's just tough anyway, because they're like 10-month use.
Our next board meeting is the 15th, October 15th.
Yeah, we probably could get more data for the October 15th meeting. We could have the irrigation system in before then.
Again, going back, Lynn makes a good point. Do we want to agree to the non-lapsing? That's what the item is here.
That's, we've got a motion and a second. We could vote on that, yeah, we could approve that if we want. If we're not approving it, then.
To John's point, do you want to put a cap on it?
I think you have to.
Yeah.
So what's the cap? 31? What was the other quote that we got? I mean, was it in the same neighborhood as this?
We didn't get another quote for this work yet.
I requested, I explained what we were looking for, and I asked Green Machine to provide a quote.
Oh, you did not get it. Sorry. I thought you did get it.
I think they're waiting or something.
Okay.
So, want me to call a vote, or we're just approving it with 30? Do you want to make the motion? Whoever made the motion seconded to put a cap on it? John's requested or recommended?
I made the original motion, but what's the cap?
And the amended?
So 31?
31,000.
So I'll amend my motion to approve using non-lapsing funds to treat the fields up to 31,000?
Let's see.
Not exceeding.
And who was the second on that before?
That was me. Do we want to include it? Make sure we know that that 31K is for an annual plan, not a one-time treatment?
So for an annual plan?
Well, no, this is just for non-lapsing for this year.
Right.
The next step that you're talking about would actually have to be built into the budget moving forward.
Okay, so should I get rid of that last part?
I guess I said, an annual plan is a one-item thing, so I don't think it's going to happen, but I just don't want to make it seem like we approve a $31,000 for a single treatment in the fall.
Right.
Yeah, but hoping, well then what?
How do we word that to make sure it's?
Well, we could add annual to it, to the motion.
I think I.
To the annual plan.
Annual plan.
Man is willing to do that, and you're willing to second that. Is that acceptable?
Yeah.
Okay.
Any other questions or comments on the board on that? Okay, Lisa, you want to read the motion back to us? Because I don't know what it is.
That's a Michael Stiles, true, of non-lapsing funds to treat the fields at the middle and high school, and I could see $35,000, $31,000 for an annual plan.
Okay. Okay, all those in favor of the motion signify, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, motion carried. There we go. We can look further with that. Okay, item five, agenda items for future meetings. We have student performance presentation October 28th.
Our next meeting is on the 15th?
15th, yep. And it is at the Town Hall.
Or Community Center, Community Center.
Remember, that's a Tuesday, right?
I mean, Community Center, yes.
Columbus Day.
Community Center.
So it's a Tuesday meeting.
Whatever we're calling it these days.
It's at the bottom of the agenda.
Financial finance.
If I don't put it here, I'll come, you'll show up here. And then it will be hard to see everybody else's cars.
Any additions to the agenda?
Yeah, I got something.
Hold on.
I think we have what to Missy to get her eval done. I think that should be something that's included.
Oh, we did have that on before. We don't have it here. Good point, is finishing up her contract?
Yes.
I think you want us to finish that, right?
The eval or the contract?
Evaluation.
Well, I don't know. I'm talking about, I know the contract.
The contract, evaluation, to me, it's kind of the same thing. Because you've got your evaluation that had to be finished too, right?
I was under the impression we finished it.
Okay. I thought we read through it, and that was about it. No comments or anything like that. We're done. We're there. Or did I miss something?
I don't know.
Well, we could put that on the agenda, and wouldn't that be executive session anyway? To talk about the third year, wouldn't that be an executive session? Or no?
Um, extending the contract for the third year would not necessarily need to be executive session.
You will. Mark to Mark's comment, I guess, and the people who are here. I wasn't here, so I don't know. I mean, how's this, how do we feel, how do you feel it ended? I wasn't at the meeting.
Yeah, I don't think we got it finished. We were, we tabled it.
We did.
Locked out. It was tabled.
You're right, Mark. We did. I think that, at least my recollection, because it was a long meeting, not just the executive session wasn't one as long, but it was a long meeting. And there probably wasn't as much feedback from the board typically one would render.
Right, yeah. Missy presented her piece of.
Missy did a, you know, she did what we had anticipated she would do, which is to update us on achievement, goals, et cetera. And I think we kind of, you know, I won't say we dropped the ball, but we were, we were brief in our, in our comment. It was kind of a, and then the, if I recall, I sort of suggested that, hey, rather than start a whole discussion here about looking at the additional year and, you know, getting into any kind of compensation discussion or anything of that nature, I think I had suggested that we should probably wait until we start getting ourselves ramped up for budget. And I think I threw it out there that, you know, maybe even as late as Thanksgiving, when we start into budget for '25, '26, that's hard to say. But that would be the time when, you know, we should start thinking and discussing options for additional year and proposing something to the superintendent. Now, a couple months from now, you know, take your poison type of thing. But I think my point then was, I just don't want to see this come and go full circle, and then, you know, it's next May or June, and we haven't done that yet. So we should have, before we have a first cut, if you will, budget for next fiscal year, we should have that particular X factor, if you will, wrapped up. I don't know. Does anyone feel strongly, strongly different from what I just said? I don't know.
I don't remember the exact language in the contract, but I thought we were supposed to do with evaluation in June and give that third year. Now, we did evaluation later, but I'm not sure, you know, if Missy wants to wait till November for us to think about a third year, when normally I think we would be discussing that topic, when do we do the evaluation in June? And, you know, that's just going to get.
You don't need to attach any finances to it, financial increments to the third year?
We could just say aye or nay to a third year.
Mm-hmm.
Right. But my point, my point was, we could do that, but we should have in mind where we're going, dollars and cents.
Well, I don't, yeah, I don't disagree with that. Then we should meet as a, as a group and touch negotiations and think about what we want to do with dollars and cents, because that's what it comes down to, that comes down to dollars and cents. Right? That's not something we do in a public meeting for any, any group, the dollars and cents. But, you know, I don't think she wants to wait until after the budget time either.
I think we probably then should go back in, at our next meeting, we should have executive session. We should invite Missy in for the sole purpose of just determining whether or not we want to offer the third year.
What our next steps are.
Hopefully that would be brief.
Sure.
Hopefully.
So I just went back to the 9:9 meeting minutes. I wasn't here. But our agenda for future meetings was approve the extension of the superintendent contract, which is what you just suggested, solar options, student activities, and Board of Education goals. Now, on the Board of Education goals, I know that you threw out some dates, so we're moving on that. But should we add these others to our future meetings in tonight's meeting as well? Have we talked about solar options or student activities?
Solar options, we had a full presentation.
Okay, so that can come off.
But I don't know what the board wants to go. We, we didn't do anything with it. We brought the company in, we gave a presentation. So I did notice that somebody, it was on the agenda for future, but I need a direction as to where to go with it.
Ray kind of had the reins on that, and then.
I'm sorry?
Ray had, was taking the lead on that, and I think once he left, that kind of wayside a little bit.
No, I, I think we carried it through as far as we could as, you know, our side, because we had to, we need to work with the town to work with the solar.
I think beneficial, it'd be more beneficial to partner with the town.
Yeah, I think so. Because the town owns other properties too, and it does impact them. Could we ask Missy to ask, even form a committee to look at that? Solar options for schools and slash community? I mean, they've got, they have some already. Are they using the same company? Are they using the company from Ellington? Do you know?
I don't know.
I don't know who they're using.
Aren't we, wasn't there something about, like, we were holding off on, I don't know, it was like gym floors, and I thought it was solar too, because there was a potential of a new roof, or like, we had that in the budget or something of such?
Well, actually, roof would be an issue for, yeah, that's why we don't want to do the floor now, at least a floor. And if we're going to put solar on that roof, we certainly want the roof done. That is a factor.
Yep.
Yeah. And the middle school and high school roofs that were done before, you know, that's different. But even then, I remember being up there on the roof with the company. They said, if you ever put solar up here, you have to contact us. So we just can't just do it. You know, they certainly want to have some impact on where the holes are going to be drilled in, when you talk about roof warranties, and that's sometimes an issue. But.
I think we also had some discussion about making it more of a town farm.
Yeah, that discussion was there.
And I think that was, which would make sense, rather than be putting them on roofs of roofs, 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 some of those words.
Hooves on the roof.
Right, hooves on the, thank you. On the roofs.
On the roofs.
Okay. We're getting bogged down now. Any other, any other additions for the agenda for future meetings?
Do we also want to include the line item budget that we were talking about previously and have that ready for next time?
I don't know if you have it ready for next time. But you have a start with it or something?
Have a start of where we're going and what it might look like.
So it's like three weeks away, right? So in that conversation, I thought I heard, and I could be wrong, that you could maybe Mary present what the system can do now. Are we still going along those? And then Ricky, you were going to follow up with some additional research, right?
Yeah, Missy and I have discussed this. I'll sit with her. It's still all down my handle. I'll sit with Missy, and we will discuss on how to put together what we talked about before.
I just, I don't want to, I don't want to hold you to three weeks from tomorrow night. Okay.
Do we need, do we need an update on the bus? Just for next meeting? Two liner.
On ZONAR?
ZONAR and also just, you know.
What ZONAR?
Done ZONAR, aren't we?
I thought we put a ZONAR aside.
I thought we tabled.
ZONAR for.
I'm just talking about the bus. We had a good presentation, and we felt like we're heading in the right direction. We felt like we were getting close to, you know, not exceeding a reasonable time for our children to be on bus. So I just throw it out there that superintendent can, but two liens is where we're doing, this is how we're doing, or two lying, this is how we're not doing.
So you'd be okay for her to have it in the report?
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, I don't think we needed this.
Talking point for us.
Talking point. I also, we go the same thing with the middle school launch, you know, Mr. Phelan.
Dr. Phelan?
Mr. Phelan. Mr. Phelan, you know, came, gave us a good presentation. I think we felt good, but would love to know if things have improved, if you will, if some of the things we discussed and some of the things that he presented and clarified for us whether those things are taking shape. So, again, that two or three sentences from the superintendent would be great for me.
So on her report?
Yeah.
That will cover it. Okay. Any, anyone else have anything? Okay, seeing none. Item six, comments from visitors.
No comments, other than just saying, "I drew a name from Eight Mount Vernon Drive." The, on the quote, I may be a typo, but it looks like it's two and a half years old. So there's a chance the prices have gone up a bit. Maybe I just want to check that out. I could be wrong.
About prices going up, you're probably not.
Two and a half years, and these times could be.
That's scary, two and a half years.
Ten years ago, we wouldn't have thought about it.
Good things from them, okay, good, thank you for that comment. Okay, anyone else? Okay, motion for German.
You.
Mark with the motion.
I'll second.
Whitney with the second. Okay, any questions, comments, those in favor, if I say aye. Aye, opposed, meeting adjourned, thank you, everyone, thank you for coming, thank you.